I still, I know y'all got to be conscious. Oh, so last week was our work session, right? We met on Tuesday because Monday was holiday, right? So it was a work session and I had to leave, and Terry calls me and says, if y'all want a special call me. So you and him had asked for that. Okay, that's good. I just wanted, well, I didn't have a way to document, but I just wanted to understand if y'all were asking, y'all asked for that.
Well, I think-
But y'all asked here in the meeting and you were co-chair.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's what this was.
Did it?
Budget and a special call me.
Well, I didn't understand it was a budget meeting and-
I didn't.
And I understood that it was, we were looking at, and it says, "Role call matters to address for new contracts," and I thought it said, "Contracts concerning the city of Hefflin." Okay.
Right.
And so, that's what the special call means, my understanding. Now, now if y'all-
That's right.
Okay. And then next week, we can either vote on the meeting, vote to approve the budget, and if you're not happy with the budget like it is Monday evening, then you can continue the meeting. We usually do that.
Yeah, that's what we-
Continue it just the budget. I mean, to vote on the budget later. Y'all need some more time on that.
So we're not gonna vote on the budget?
I, I mean-
We don't have, you can't do it, but you, you can't do any call or session for the budget, is what Brian said, right?
Well, I, I don't know what happened, to be honest with you. I don't really think you should, but-
No, I don't do it. It's almost like-
I didn't understand it when he called me. I thought it was a- Well, what was going by, then you give us a sheet that laid out the-
It was a tentative schedule and I actually got called out on them too because I thought that it said on the table that we would have to schedule to meet to discuss the budget. But actually what that schedule was, to have the budgets back to the department heads to let them have a chance to review.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah, I'm confused. I don't know what to say. Cause I didn't think I was doing this budget tonight. And Al's over there running-
Well, and I think it caused some other department heads off guard too. And I apologize, but I, that's what I understood. But I had left the meeting, so I just wanted to-
So let's just call this one the order, get it done.
All right. It's all my fault. So come on, we got it. All right.
I'm just glad somebody took ownership of something.
What happened?
I think percent of it goes from Ms. Cobb.
Okay. All right, so we call on the meeting to order Ms. Cobb, Mr. Owens,
Here.
Mr. Hill, Mr. Henrys.
Here.
All four are here. Matters to be addressed for new contracts, and I'm, and my understanding was the contract between the city of Hefflin and, and, uh,
The county.
And the county. And I know that the, the mayor sent up an offer and it was two things. And I, and I don't really think we should look at it as two things. I don't think it means two separate issues. One contract is for, for the jail and the other contract is for dispatching. Do you agree with that? I mean, I just want your input on that, but-
Yes.
Okay. So, and I don't, and I know some of y'all had in mind about going down and making, this is just an idea, two separate ideas here. That y'all were looking at, to making some sort of, agreeing right now who would go down and possibly discuss this with them.
Uh, the only thing I know is so far is they, you know, I guess they, you know, they follow what we do. So what they've done is they, the council members have said they don't have two council members to meet with, two commissioners discuss it and then, you know, just to go over the contracts and then, get whatever deal we get and we come back and then we either accept it or we don't accept it. So maybe just by the way, come to mind quick.
Okay. So, uh, I know, I think he offered half of dispatching, or the city offered half of dispatching and $28 on?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty, twenty eight to start with, with the first couple hours, talked on the county commission, showed it now, and so now it's $20.
Okay.
And it was 52% less. It was $85,000 and something, they only paid 30, 60,000.
So we're still in a negotiation stage. I still feel like that, you know, we need to talk, we're gonna try to work it out and come to some kind of agreement.
So, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think, well, that's what just referred to what Laura was saying. Time to go down and work on trying to get the best deal that we can get for the county. Come back, put it on the table, and then if the commission don't want it, then we don't want it. And if you do, you do. But I think, I think it's gonna be better to make the case a case and try to work it out and carry our understanding and stuff that we feel than what they feel.
Well, I mean, I do understand that for us, the dispatching, whatever you take off Hefflin, we don't have to pick up. And the mayor in Ramburn and President Lammer, they're gonna call me and they'll say, whatever you take off Hefflin, take off there. So, but you can't change the law of mind and it costs where it costs to run it, so whatever you knock off, the commission's gonna pick up. Ain't that correct, President?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, in that light, we can cut a deal and say, well, we just ain't gonna spend that much. It's still gonna cost where it costs.
I'm not saying it's not gonna cost where it costs, but it's no different.
We're just having a negotiation for it now, right now.
You're saying it, and it looks good.
We haven't met.
I'm good with that.
So we gotta negotiate somewhere and somehow agree.
Well, I had thought, and I thought maybe completely wrong, my thought was that another topic, President, about it, we've been, now, coming up with some ideas of how we bring this thing to, to an end. And I thought that if we get back and just make a counter offer, I mean, I think we all have kind of gotten an idea of what they're really wanting to do. And I think if we make a counter offer, then that might be, oh, an end to the whole thing, the whole, going back and forth. And I think that they can kind of make themselves clear of what they want, and if we're willing to deal with that, and we can-
That's reasonable.
Send them-
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we could send them, and that's when they, I just get a very simple, you know, this is what we'd like to offer for you to pay. If, if you're in agreement with this, they're having a meeting tonight, which is one reason I thought if we could get this letter and get it on the same page and they can offer them, they could actually pass it.
But they've got to have somebody to go to them.
Well, I mean, they sent us a letter. They didn't come to us. They sent us a letter.
They're, okay.
But it was just a thought. I'm just-
Well, I think, what was our, what was our amount that we was gonna charge them, started with? Is that the number?
It's not in here, though.
I mean, that first one for dispatching.
It's the amount she's definitely not paying.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so-
But that didn't change, but the inmate housing is a separate letter and it didn't change.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you send that letter, well, I don't find me sending the letter. I would give it, just don't send the letter. So if they send the letter right and they say no, so the negotiation's over. Cause I think what they were thinking, that we're gonna come talk to them. So, cause I think what their voting number tonight was, is two people meet with their two people to discuss it, but I'm good with that.
I know, I was just trying, I, you know, I am scared that it's tied up with trying to tie up the handbill or something like that.
I know, that's the number I didn't try to get, so.
And maybe they're not without negotiating.
Is that the dispatching?
It was just a thought to try-
Was that the dispatching?
Bring it to an end.
I was just gonna, I was in the dollar amount, you know, the difference in the dollar today and 2001. Inflation, yeah.
Yeah. We, I want to say this. We gotta remember, we got two different contracts going on right here, two different agreements. Dispatching is a situation where you remember we also, I don't think Roger was here, but, you know, we decided to create a board and take it out of the county commission. And the board at that time, you took it with a whole new board and y'all set dispatching fees and got them, for how long would y'all run and operate without us?
We did the, I did the dispatching phase before the board was implemented.
But I mean, did you get paid, how long was the board implemented? How long was it in?
Two years.
And they paid how much?
Um, this, nearly the same amount. We, we adjusted slightly when the board took over. Um, because we were trying to get an amount not overly exaggerated, of course. So we adjusted it a couple of times to get it to where we needed it. Um, and back then, of course, just the board agreed to that. We sat down with everybody. It was a big, it was a big issue. And so what I told the, the mayor is that it's really critical to understand is that we, we get no funding except for those state fees. So when we, when I did the dispatching fees, when we calculated those, we based those on a call log. It was nothing more than, we took our budget, what we needed, we subtracted the state fees, and then we needed this dollar amount. I looked at cost statistics and it split fairly. And that's why you're gonna see EMS and the city of Ramburn upset because it's based fairly across the board.
All right, let's talk about this. We now sit the 911, this is 911 really? It's not EMA, right?
Yes, that's right. So dispatching is 911.
Okay. So as a commission, do we have the right to even meet and talk about this, or should this be a 911 meeting? See what I'm saying? So this is not a commission decision, but we are still on the 911 board now. But the 911 board went to a nonprofit for a while, but they ran into some problems and gave it back to us, right? But they operated under that and it left, it basically left the county's hands for a while. Y'all see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So now it's given back, but we have a separate meeting, right?
Right.
So that argument about all that in the past, to me, is null and void. It's been passed through another board and then back to us. If we'll say that. Y'all see what I'm saying? And this right here is a different issue and I don't know what we can survive, you might communicate before on that.
But, I mean, I mean, $75,000 sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking about what she's doing, that's one person, basically. Benefits and pay and all that's to, to run. Something like that, even if you're doing it by the skin of your teeth, it's gonna take six people. I mean, that's a hell of, $75,000 is a hell of a deal, I think. And I've been doing business since I was 16 years old. I've made a lot of money. So, I mean, I ain't no idiot.
We were very careful with that. I mean, I brought over it for weeks and weeks and did research on how other counties did it as well. And that is the only fair way to do it amongst our paying entities.
Let me, let me say this. You, the board, the 911 board has asked you to put this together, that cost, right? You- Yeah.
I mean, the last 911 board meeting, you brought up whether to send them the contract or not send them the contract. And did you send it to them? I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, we sent it.
So that 911 board needs to decide. And I know that's us, but we're not having a 911 board, board meeting right now. We're having a county commission. So they-
Well, we're here to call this to a close and then-
No, no, I'm just, I'm, we're just talking right now. Don't call it to a close yet. Let's just talk. Present them, present this to them and let the board meet next week at 11:30 and decide whether or not they, they want it or not on this dispatching. This is dispatching. Does that make sense, or you disagree?
No, I mean, I think the city is fully intended for a counter offer.
Y'all decide what's up with that. And, and if, if they counter offer, if they still say no to this right here, then the 911 board, now, how do we need to approve it during a 911 meeting? And that'd be maybe a, or the budget meeting. Cause it's a 911 budget meeting.
So those numbers we're talking about is this.
Mark and Crystal might, hey, if Mark and Crystal does not go to-
She presented that to them already. And they presented something back in the 911. And as a 91, how do we need to, that's what I'm asking. This is a 911 issue. This is something that we need to vote on in the 911 meeting.
I think the city is gripping it together. They presented, I don't understand, they presented it together, so-
But I'm asking us-
Yeah, we, we, you're right.
You're right.
We can't put them together. We have to do them separate because it's two different, one commission and one board.
And, and before, the sheriff did that. That was what he was asking for.
So you're talking about the change in the jail?
Yeah. But, I mean, that, that's mine. But this right here, how did, I know when we voted as commission to do your budget, but when we voted as commission, or we voted as a 911 board to do your budget as a 911?
Commission does the budget.
So, Mark, I, I see you. I don't know.
Cause we, we both are gonna vote on that, cause you're not 911.
Vote contracts, not, but not the budget. Contract is a 911 deal.
The thing is, you, I, all the thing I can say, you do, I mean, this is complicated. I said here, listen, I don't say it's complicated. All the thing I can say is if you wanna vote on the number one for us, somebody, if y'all want somebody to go and meet with the sheriff, I mean, not the sheriff, but the city on the first one. And then call, especially call me the day to come back, cause it gets two different boards and runs, right? That's gonna be different. I say, we can't make a decision on contracts for 911. All the thing we can vote on is that number one contract right there. And then there was another one in that pair.
That's a good point.
We're, I mean, you know-
We don't have any time to vote on that.
Why, we've got so confusion, so much confusion.
If not, then what do you do?
And, and I didn't think about it. None of us thought about it.
But, but now we have thought about it, so you can leave it with that first contract right there.
That's all we can vote on tonight.
That's it.
All right, let's talk, I talked to Mark a minute. And, uh, Mark, add a point, I'll give you a point. We pay a fee as a county commission. We send you money as a board. As a commission. You charge us how much?
Eighty something thousand.
That's more than that, right?
Uh, 103,967 dollars.
The commission's, the commission pays for the sheriff's department and volunteer fire departments. The volunteers are like-
Cheers.
16,000. I just want to get off the top of my head.
So, when we approve the budget, we're paying, we're, we're approving to pay the 80,000, right?
The 100,000, yes.
The 100,000 for the county commission and the sheriffs and the, okay.
Here's a breakdown.
Okay, all right. But I, I'm just trying to, trying to-
At the bottom, I think, that's, that's what Ramburn pays, that's what Hefflin paid last year.
What? What, and I think this is what you're saying, Mark, and I hope I'm saying it right. We're, when we approve the budget, we're only approving our budget of paying $100,000 to you on that budget and we pass it. And you've got to operate, so the 911 board, you're still trying to get this going. So the 911 board is separate from this board. Even though we're the same people, we're separate.
They do.
And so we, so they're arguing with this group, or they're arguing with us as a 911 group, okay? Was that what he's trying to say, Mark? Say it, Mark.
Oh, we're the 911 fees, she collects the state, go to fund the 911 side of her operation. The dispatch fees are for a separate service for the dispatching. And that's what this, other municipalities are paying for, is the dispatching service. It's the 911 separate from dispatching. It's two separate entities of the operation. So my question is whether or not you do have the authority to, well, Crystal may have the authority by herself to decide what she does for these individual municipalities where 911 will be controlled by the 911 board.
No, the, the board still oversees the functions of that department. They still oversee functionality of-
The dispatch one.
Right.
She couldn't, I don't think, she's got a contract without, so, yeah.
But it still has to be the 911 in doing the 911 meeting.
Correct. But anyway, we, there's nothing we can do with that tonight. Only the-
That's simple enough.
It is what it is. They, if they, they want it, they want it or not.
We, you, right, if they don't take it, then they'll dispatch, they'll go out and dispatch their own, and it will lose the total amount.
All right. If, if one of y'all wanna go down there and, I mean, it, it's your district if you go down there to tell them that. Right?
Right.
But what's the other way?
Ms. Owens and Ms. Cobb went initially.
Uh-huh.
And I think they should go personally.
But we're only dealing with this one right now.
We're, this is-
Okay.
I think, though, the, the issue comes in, right, is that the city has said that, you know, they're lumping them together because they're not gonna do this unless the commission ends on the other. And that's what we're gonna-
Well, I just, I disagree and I've already been said, you know, I've always, I've already got trouble for saying something abrupt. But I disagree. Two different issues.
I agree, it's two, right.
But y'all, I mean, y'all, y'all are all commissioners and y'all can, and then it's still gotta be voting on-
You got two choices on the table. I mean, this is, uh, I mean, we're, we're trying to get the best deal for the county. So get the best deal that we can get for the county. If you don't accept, there, there's no law that says anybody has to accept anything. So if you want, whatever you wanna send down there at the end of the day, say, hey, this is what we want. If you don't, as we say, if you don't want it, take the business somewhere else. I mean, that's something you can say.
Well, if you take this down, you're saying this is, you know-
Well, we can't do nothing with that you got in your hand.
I mean, you, you, hey, you say this is what has been presented to you guys, this is what the 911 board is looking to either pass or not pass. This is it. The other is small potatoes compared. I mean, we can, we can live and afford that on a, I don't know what y'all wanna do about that. I don't know what y'all can, what can we live with?
Before we're after that.
What can we live with? How big and how old we gonna be with the budget if they go down from, what, what are they paying now? What are they, what were they paying last year? 32?
32, I don't try to think. But, you know, Lane brought us that, uh, letter the other day and, and he claims it's costing us $58 a day, but, uh, he's a dude, I think, but I think quite a-
Well, that, that's gonna come out of our pockets if they don't pay, whatever they pay, we gonna have to cover the rest, you know?
The issue is, keep saying is, after that third day, they become our prisoners anyway. If they're in Cowan County, we got to go back and get them and bring them back here. What is that cost gonna cost us?
And I, and I can't, I, I don't know that answer. I, I just wonder, like I say, this, that's a smaller, to me, a much smaller issue. And I think we could absorb more cost, but I don't know what that number is. What do y'all think that magic number is? At least, I mean, I think you've been-
We have 28 to start with, but they didn't have, they, I mean, we didn't, commission didn't want the 28.
Well, we, we do know that it may be tough this year, but we do know that if you pay the jail off, and I know you got some new stuff that needs to be worked on, but you, the jail pays off this coming year.
There you go. We might, I know they did a lot of work. I, I, it wouldn't make bother me if we turned it into a whole new sale and moved over and like, in another direction. I mean, it's, 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 it's turned out to be a little easier to handle the inmates and process them than from what I'm hearing, than what they were putting up with and, you know, and all the call, you know, they were doing a lot of calls to the jail. But, I mean, and they don't mind still doing that, but I'm just saying, when you pull up at the salary board, and you take them out and you turn them in, and you go back and do your paperwork, or you spend an hour in your own hometown, I think that sort of got rectified, I guess. I don't know. But, but I think, I think when you start looking at those things that you are, but the jail is paying off, I think that it pays off, what, four months into, four to five months into next year?
June.
June.
So, uh, you know, give back a little bit of that. Uh, we're not looking to spend a million dollars on the jail, I don't think, or-
We need to make sure that in that local act, that we can take care of certain things. I mean, we may be able to do something and pull it from another. Cause I, I know that's limited, how we look at that thing.
Does, does the, the deal, the funds we got to pay for the jail, does it say operation of jail, or it say pay off the jail? I mean, I guess the question I got is, are they gonna go away in June? Are we still gonna be getting them funded?
Oh, we still get, that's fine. We still gonna get them.
So it's all duration.
I will say this, I'm just looking at FY '22, I did that because the whole year, I can look at all of the numbers. That if we had been collecting on $28 a day, which I think is a number, it's kind of being tossed to the mass possibility on this, we would have collected about $3,300 less from the city of Hefflin alone. Now, the others, we would have selected less on them as well if it had been 28, cause that's what they're gonna want, if that's what we're charging them.
That's what we should have, and those figures should have been presented to us and because we were gonna lose less than $4,000 by taking the $28, but we shut that down right off the bat. And now I don't think they're gonna offer $28. So, giving that $4,000, we lost that deal, I believe.
Um, I'll take whatever the commission wants to take. I mean, I'm not going to worry about it, I mean-
Which is, all we can do is present it to them and say-
I mean, you can say that the commission plans on paying its part to what's been asked of the 911 operator, I mean-
Well, where does the, where does the commission's part come from to pay that everything?
Out of the general fund, but, I mean, you know, that's a complicated, a lot of different regulations that are into that general fund, but yes, that's-
I mean, sales tax is one of them?
Everything.
Yeah, so, so, uh, the county collects money in a sales tax to pay, no, no different than the court fee at the courthouse, to pay off, to pay payments on the jail. So you have unrest people, which creates revenue for the county to pay off the jail and to make payments on the jail. Cause when they first opened the jail, they didn't have, they didn't have enough money to pay for the jail when they first opened it. Cause the, cause the $30 court fee wasn't enough to pay it. I think the county still needed another 60,000 then. And so then that's when your one cent sales tax come in. So the one cent sales tax goes into the general fund, which pays the county's part of what?
Right. Of course it pays for, for that, but it's, it's a convoluted question.
I'm just, I'm just, I was trying to live here.
But it's collected inside the city limits, doesn't mean that it all came from residents of the city. I mean, it's coming from everybody within the county, you know? A lot of people are coming from outside the city limits to shop and spend money inside the city. So it's like the city can't survive without, county, county can't survive without city. So it's just, it's shared money and it all goes to a, to shared expenses as well.
Well, you know, in that, in, in that meeting, you know, Robbie was pretty vocal and, and many of us sat there and listened. I didn't agree with everything that Robbie said, but I kept my tone. But I, and I know you live in the city limits in it. I don't. I have family that does. And, uh, but a lot of people come outside the city limits and like that, but we also spend in other towns and also Hollis. Even though it's not incorporated, it raises a lot of sales tax. I don't know where the bulk of this sales tax comes from. I mean, you, you probably got RV sales and car sales where it does come from the city of Hefflin. I bet most of it does come, but those are outside, a lot of times those are outside buyers too. What was our, what is our biggest sales tax? Is it, used to be Buster Mahos?
Probably still. I don't have to look back at it. It's been a long time since I've looked at it.
It's one of them. It was all of your, your stations, your service stations and all. They, they also, it's the largest portion of your sales tax off of I-20.
I bet a lot of them are the biggest.
Yeah, they did this.
Now, yeah, but at one time I said, one of your biggest sales taxes coming, because I asked that question before.
But, but, but everybody, that's not, you know, the way it was said, it was presented like the city of Hefflin held us up. And I disagree. And I disagree with that, and no disrespect, I disagree with that. You know.
Yeah, you're on one of them.
Holds the county up, the way Robbie preached that night is that the city of Hefflin took the, the burden and they got a three cent sales tax. So, I know that an inside city tax, if they have a three cent sales tax outside city, they don't get it. But they, they, he painted the picture as that of Hefflin held the county up, and I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, it's not all just Hefflin residents. And, everybody that shops at Loves is not a Hefflin resident, he, you know, I'm just saying.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the figures were on Loves, but when Tanya Longley was presenting it. She, her estimates was the city of Hefflin would get six hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes and the county would give them one hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes. So.
But I don't think it's built to that yet.
Why, did they, in that, in that special, no, that's not in the special district.
Because they were giving up.
That's the only thing.
She was fine sharing inside sales, so they were giving up the gas tax.
Yeah, the gas tax, you're close.
They, they gave that, uh.
Because see, that was, see, that's gas tax, they don't give us.
Right.
Cause then, and what the city of Hefflin gets, city just gives them one cent, but they got a three cent sales tax on gas that's sold inside, that's sold inside the city.
Really, basically?
That's not, and see, what happened over the years, instead of paying the road, the other municipalities chose to buy stuff and deal stuff. So now, the, the body said that this money is only gonna be spent for paying the road and, you know, if we ever get all, get all the roads paid, then they can take the money and use it for somebody else, but that's what Robbie did. I mean, say, Rudy tried to do that, but he got so far in debt, the city was so far in debt and Robbie coming.
I don't remember what she said.
Well, if you would get Loves, if you would get Loves, if you look at that, they get, the city gets three cents, right?
But now, you know, they gave up.
Did they give up?
There was a lot of the money that was giving up as far as the gas, the only thing that they're getting is the inside sales tax. Is that not true?
I don't know, I don't know what they gave up.
And that was, when that was all being negotiated, that it was incentives there for so, for such a period of time. Was that not, was that not true?
So they gave up some?
Yeah.
But we did.
We did give them nothing.
No.
They also gave up some of their sales tax.
Now, the capital sales tax, they gave up some of the gas tax.
Right, that's what I was, that's what, that is their gas tax.
Yeah, but not inside.
Because across the street, you know, they have the three cents tax, so it was, it was a little bit of a argument.
Ah.
A little bit.
That, that was, that was some negotiation they had.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea what the city paid the past year to the jail inmate service?
Probably eight, what was it?
I know that the city feels like they're, they're paying enough, you know, for the jail.
For FY twenty two, it was twenty six thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollars.
Twenty six thousand.
The jail will small potatoes compared to this dispatch.
Sure is.
So we're talking about the twenty six, we're talking about twenty seven thousand dollars?
So if, if, were y'all to put down, okay, the, the twenty eights off the table, no, we gotta lay off, so.
I mean, I tell you what I would do. I'd say I'm gonna take them for fifteen dollars and, and just make sure we get the.
You know, we did.
No, it's gonna cut it.
No, but, make sure we get crystals up here and, and cut a little better deal on the sheriff's department and move on. And then maybe that there might, uh, spring them out into the, cause I've been trying my best to get to that number. Just talking, you know, with the farmer's market and stuff, as I see one, you know, cause I try to explain to you, there's no way it's gonna be able to lose dispatching. I don't see, I mean, never mind, I don't know, but any way they'll be able to do their own dispatching, and I don't know, so.
Look at that again after the video they're talking, you know?
And I, and I explained.
And I think they do understand that.
But I can't.
We don't have to.
But I'm gonna be, and what, what, what we really need to be talking about tonight is that, that's the deal right there.
Yes, sir.
They're paying county, county twenty dollars a day.
Twenty eight.
Uh.
Paying them twenty dollars a day.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. They tell us twenty.
Yeah.
Well, I actually got the contract, what's the city's contract say?
You're talking about the city, yeah?
Yeah.
How many more here?
I thought they told us twenty.
Twenty eight.
Okay, that's a long story.
That's what I'm saying, it's gotta be cheaper for them to take them to this jail, I guess, to take them to Cowan County, they have a deputy on the road and a vehicle and all that, so it's.
Nine one, nine one one dispatching came out, Robby County for awhile. And then y'all were negotiating and they had paid that cents with that board. Mark, were you on that board? So they paid that and y'all set the dispatching fees and y'all voted on them?
Yes.
Okay, and everybody paid at that time?
Yeah, there was some, you know, some negotiations.
Yeah. So now that nine one one board has fell on us and it's a separate meeting and a separate board, is that, am I looking at that right? Cause I know EMA and nine one one, I know we get a confused, is there any other things that kind of cross over or touch base or?
No.
Okay.
Well, right now, we just gotta sit on this one and then, um.
Well, y'all wanna do any negotiating on a piece of paper or not, then we can.
Y'all, y'all have a piece of paper here, and you do the contract.
Give them a number for the inmate.
Here you go, here you go, buddy, something like.
I see the contract right now. I never stopped running, see, you seen the number? Where was it at?
Uh, Lee Patterson's done this twenty dollars, so I don't know.
So you told me twenty?
That's what he told me. But, here's the but. They don't do the booking, they don't take care of no medical, they don't do, they don't do anything except feed them and give them a jump seat.
Here it says entity agrees to pay to county and county the sum of twenty eight dollars.
Okay, twenty eight dollars, okay. But, that's, that's for nothing except feeding them and giving them a bed. That's no booking, that's no fingerprint, that's no nothing. According to what Lee told me. I make a motion that we do twenty five dollars, talk about that, let's get something on the road and go home. We got a motion to offer him twenty five dollars. I mean, they say twenty and we're thirty two, twenty eight, whatever the hell it is, let's just do it, do we have a second to go on?
I would, I, I would, I wanna take, I, I, I guess we gotta do a motion on the table.
Well, you can do a second and ask them to admit it if that's what you're gonna do.
I make a second.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is to hurry this along, let's say, let's put this, let's, let's negotiate, how far down would you negotiate? Would you, I mean, let's, okay, let's do that and then we'll go negotiate, and if they say, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna negotiate it over, cause the letter's still gonna go to the.
Okay, I take my resolution back. This is just for free.
Let's just negotiate.
And then they pay the seventy five thousand dollars.
Is that a motion?
No, that's not a motion, just talking.
I mean, we're.
We're talking about twenty cents now, we're, they got a really deal.
Yeah, I mean. Okay, then I take one, then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Let's make a motion for fifteen dollars and they pay the full amount of the dispatch.
I'll go to that.
What? Okay, we got a second?
Good.
Okay, in discussion.
Yeah, but Rammer's going with the same thing, so he, he's gonna be closer to thirty thousand instead of twenty six thousand.
Wait, see, Rammer pays that much?
I think it would. I'm too bad.
I mean, isn't that so, they did twenty, why is it going, what were the twenty?
Cause I'm trying to just add the number over there.
Well, I'm not gonna vote on that number, but I mean, we, we not even clean house it. Because whatever we subtract off that number, then our number goes up.
And continue any dispatches.
And you can't do dispatching for seventy five thousand dollars.
But we got a motion on the table, y'all ready to vote?
Yes.
And we should have a second, and, and the motion is for fifteen? Ready to vote? Alright, all in favor of the fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Those votes, no, okay. I say. So who's going down to do that, y'all, wanting to take the one?
This is two.
Alright, I mean, I mean, y'all okay if I aren't right? But now this is nine one, I said.
I understand.
But we want, we want what we want there.
Right.
Okay, yes, sir.
You need to ask Mark not to show this video till.
I'm way behind on that.
As a matter of fact, we probably should have went to executive session to discuss the contracts anyway.
Yeah, you, you.
Yeah.
I'm just looking right. Alright, you only entertain a motion to.
Mark, Mark, so.
All in favor, stand up. Alright, so next week we meet at four thirty, nine one one.
You got Mark now?
Five, next month, next Monday, five o'clock, four thirty, four thirty, five o'clock, we've got a lot of things to vote on.
Oh, it's got, it's got plenty.